Good afternoon and welcome to the September 27th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. For those wishing to participate remotely, you can join by calling 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or join by computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. Is there anyone in the audience recording? Seeing none, can we stand and just look flag?
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and do the republic, of which we stand one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as it is for all.
We have no one signed up for public comments, and under public hearings and presentations, we have the 99 Restaurants of Boston, and members will see the application in our packets. Is there a representative for the 99 either in the audience or on the call? I see you waving. With that... Good evening. Can anyone... Is that picking up? Okay, good, thanks. With that, I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Upton for the licensee applicant with the firm of Upton, Connel, and Devlin, 12 Water Street in Boston.
Thank you. And would you mind telling us what brings you before the board tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a change of officer at the corporate headquarters. We're doing the same change of officer for 64 locations in Massachusetts. Mr. Parkey has retired. He will be replaced by Ms. Hartness, but other than that, there's no change to any aspect of the license premise in Auburn, and there's no change to any of the restaurants in Massachusetts. It's a corporate filing as required by the ABCC, which as you can see, they have already approved at the state.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, are there any residents? Seeing none. Town administration, any questions or comments? Right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Is there a motion to approve or deny the changes?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the changes as submitted by the applicant in their very complete September 8th, 2021 filing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Upton.
Aye, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
All right. Next on your agenda, we have communications, and in your packets, there's a letter from the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees notifying of a vacancy that has come up again on the Library Board of Trustees. I'll turn over to the town manager.
I thank you through the Chair. The letter from the Chair, Mary Decoursey, is in your packet. This is a requirement under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, for filling a vacancy on an elected board that occurs after an election. And we did, the Library Board of Trustees had a member that resigned on, I believe, effective September 13th. So that person's seat needs to be filled until the next election. So you have to go through the same process you just went through. So I thought, so I put this communication on this evening for you to discuss if you want to change the interview process or keep the same process that you've been using the last couple of times, which is a joint interview. And then we can go ahead and advertise it. I know her letter said that they would be advertising it, but actually, the advertisement comes from your office, and through us, we get that posted.
Board members have comments, questions?
I see no reason to change the procedure, the joint meeting that we had last time. I thought that was effective.
I'd agree. Do we need to take a vote to use the same method as before of a joint meeting?
I don't think you have to vote. You just discussed it. I think you took a vote last time to use that. The reason I raised it is because I think the Chair's letter mistakenly referenced a process that was used last time. She referenced a process used last time. There actually wasn't used last time. So I didn't want there to be any confusion on their board or your board, that the process that was used last time was a joint interview, not the process identified in this letter. So I don't think you need to take another vote. You've already discussed it. As long as you're not changing it, I can just let them know what the process is going to continue as. And we'll get it advertised. And usually, we like to give people, you know, maybe four weeks or so to solicit applicants if we can. We've been going through, Rachel and my office has been doing a great job putting out, working with the IT department to put things on our website, you know, constant reminders, social media, and also utilizing through Dr. Hanfield's office, the school distribution list, which is a great list, and that actually is where we got a couple of applicants from last time. So we're going to do that again and hope we get some.
Is there anything else? Ms. Berthin?
Just a question. Is... You said that it would be until the next election, so that would be May?
Correct, yes.
So that might be an awesome opportunity for a high school senior to maybe get a little experience where their obligation would only be until May. They'd still be in school and, you know, it might be something that we might want to kind of push through the guidance and see if there's any... I say a senior, but it could be a junior or a senior.
Well, it has to be someone who's 18 and...
18 and older.
A voter. Under the charter, you have to be a...
18, so...
So you could make that.
Could be a senior, could be an older junior, yeah. So that might be a nice experience.
Certainly. I can send that over to Dr. Hanfield and see if he can post it. But yeah, the requirement under our charter is you have to be a registered voter of the town to participate.
That's a great idea, and the AP government class particularly might be interested in it, or some students there.
Great idea. Thank you. Great idea.
All right. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing. Moving on. Under Board of Selectmen general items, we have a vote on an approval of disclosure by municipal employee for snow plowing as required by General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B. That disclosure is in your packets, but I'll hand it over to the town manager to talk more about it.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the Board of Selectmen, I believe the last time you voted special municipal employees under the law was just 2017, and at that time, you had taken a vote to vote snowplow operators as special town employees. So it's not the person, it's the position that's voted on as a municipal special employee. But the law, conflict of interest law, requires the employee to fill out a form that states that there is no... There's a lot of conflict of interest things in there. So basically, if an employee is doing two jobs, say, number one have to be a special town employee, which snowplow operators are, because we have a few that do a different job as well. But they are required under the law to fill out this form, and the form requires the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to sign it. So I think you probably could have signed it because you took the vote in 2017 to create the special town, a special municipal employee out of a snowplow operator. But just to be certain, we wanted to bring it to you tonight to ask you to vote to authorize the Chair to sign this form. John Horniac, who's doing a great job, he is our assistant in the IT office, working with both Mike Marino and Chris Hugo with Cable Television, and he's also agreed to plow force, and it would not be conflicting with his daytime hours. It would be after his normal hours, and if he's not working on anything, emergency for IT.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so my only question is, so you don't, he doesn't have set hours for the town? He's helping with the... In other words, if a storm goes where he has to be out for a certain number of hours, chances are the offices are going to be closed, but if it's that big a storm. But is there any, is there any union or anything in effect where you can only work so many hours and then you have to take so many hours off?
Yep. No, that's a great question. His position is not in the union. He's not a collective bargaining employee. He is what you call a bi-law employee. So he's an exempt employee, paid salary. The difference is when you're, when you're filling the role of a special municipal employee, in this case, a snowplow operator, you can't perform that job during your normal operating hours of your regular job. So as a salaried employee, we can only go by our operating hours of town hall. But in his particular position, he does a lot of emergency work. So if we have an emergency, he's the person that police fire and the Emergency Management Director, as well as myself, or Ed, turn to, to do postings. You know, you see postings during the snowstorms. You see us going out during critical events. So he is the person that does that. He would not be able to plow if we needed his services for that. So he would be plowing after our normal operating hours, you know, nights and weekends unless he was working on an emergency. And there is, there is under state law, a requirement for the special municipal employees. I think they cannot work more than 800 hours or 20 hours a week in this second capacity. But that's not even an issue with the snowplow. Hopefully, hopefully, we don't need anyone who needs to work that much this winter.
Perfect. Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the municipal disclosure, the disclosure by municipal employee financial interest agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next, we have a wage-stuff policy in Bala. Since we have two representatives from the Carpenters Union that are coming in to answer questions, and I was just notified that they won't be in until 7:00, I'm going to ask the board to take Items 5C and D, 5CD, out of order. Would you want to move on to the town meeting warrant to clear out town employees?
Yeah, that would be, if we could, actually, if we could move on to, because I think this might be quick, if we could do the, the number is 5H, the feedback from the letter relative to the plastic bag van?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So what, sorry, what, when is this then?
So how would you do the warrant first?
Okay, so I guess if you want to go to the warrant first, that would clear out more people.
All right. In that case, can I have a motion to move up agenda item 5F? Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So 5F is the October 26th, 2021 draft special town meeting warrant, and vote on recommendations for warrant articles to be taken. In your packets, you have the updated version of the warrant. With that, turn it over to the town manager.
Great, thank you. Yes, you have a, an updated version of the warrant that was originally given to you on September 13th that you voted to send to town council for review, and he is in the process of reviewing each warrant article. Since that time, we had a couple of changes. We did remove one article, so they've been renumbered, and there have been some added dollar amounts in some of the other warrant articles. So I don't know if the board wants to go through, go through each of them separately, or if you want to group any of them together.
Yeah. So do board members have questions? I know we can... If we choose not to take any positions on these articles tonight, I think we have time before town meeting, but they won't, town meeting members won't be notified of the board's position until, I think it would be the night of town meeting, right?
Through the Chair, I believe you have a board meeting the night before, a planned one on October 25th. So you could, if you had any remaining, you could vote then. You could also vote on October 13th. If there was anything that you needed additional information on before taking a position.
Okay.
Right, so you'd be voting to either recommend, not recommend, or defer to the petitioner? Or hold until you get more information.
So with that, I'm certainly fine with holding off and then asking questions of town employees while they're here. But up to members of the board with how you want to proceed. Ms. Berthin?
I have a question on a particular article. Once I do that, I mean, we can take them all as a whole and recommend or not recommend, however the other board members want to do it. Do you want me to go with my question to the...
Sure.
Just basically Article 2, it was just a matter of more detail. It says program coordinator, position from 6,300 to 20,767,50, and I just want a little bit more about what the program coordinator is.
Sure. So this is a line out of in the senior center budget. As you probably know, during COVID, we eliminated an assistant senior center director position. About two years prior to that, maybe a year prior to that, we had had a study and an analysis done of the senior center operations, and that study came back with the recommendation that what we, moving forward in the future, what we really needed to have, and this has nothing to do with the position we eliminated, just it was another position, was a program coordinator. Someone who actually would be setting up all the programs. That involves getting the instructors, getting the contracts in place, getting the insurance policies in place, physically setting the room up and breaking it down for each program. And the report highly recommended that what we really needed to have there was a program coordinator who could also help with other tasks as well that would fall on a program coordinator. So we had left some money in the budget, thinking that maybe we could wait. We didn't know when COVID was going to stop as far as being able to open our town buildings. So initially, we were thinking we might not need to fund that position until the spring. But we were able to actually open, as we all know, to our surprise, we were able to start opening everything in July. So we now have the director really doing all of this on her own. And we do have an outreach coordinator, but she has her own position as well. So this is a program coordinator position that would be setting up all the programs at the senior center, and there were many of them. So this, this will be funding it for the remainder of the year. This is starting July, January 1. So this would be six months position for now, and there is a job description, all prepared, that would be advertised for this position.
So what, you said six months, so would it be roughly a $42,000 position?
Correct. This is 26, I think it was budgeted at, was it?
It was budgeted as 6,300 by a vote at town meeting. Oh, and, well, anyway, yeah, well, that would be six months worth, so I think you're spot on. It's going to be around $42,000. In the 6,300 that, that we had budgeted for this year, nothing's been spent on it because we didn't have a position or a program.
Correct.
Other questions? Mr. Carpenter?
I have a question. Article 10, which is, just deal with DDIS, one of the divisions, in repurposing money for a health online permit module for a mapping organization project. Is that, did we recognize savings from the health online permit or process or what?
So we were able to utilize a portion of the CARES money as a way to implement this module, not necessitating town meetings' action to provide for the outright purchase of this module. So we were able to do that. This is now being repurposed for a mapping project that's going to organize all of the ZBA maps, the planning board maps, going to, it's going to categorize all those and be able to put them in a neat and orderly fashion, so we'll be able to retrieve it. We did a lot of vault management already with King Information System. This is basically a further step of that project.
There are a few articles that we don't have. It's just an appropriate sum of money. Will you have a better feel in two weeks of how much that will be?
So relative to Article 6, and I didn't get into the warrant, but that value is $50,000. Article 9 is for Station 2, and I'm going to look at the chief. Chief, you haven't, you're expecting to receive a number by Tuesday? Thursday. So we'll have something towards the end of the week on that.
Ask that we recommend until we get those from them.
Article 8 is a new ambulance with a value of $300,000. That's coming from ambulance receipts. We have about $2.5 million in that account. And there is a delay in the delivery of ambulance. In discussions with the chief, we were able to get an ambulance within a six-month period. It's now 18 months or approaching two years because of the delivery of materials and parts and stuff. So this just accelerates something that's already in the CIP because there's up to a two-year wait on the delivery of these vehicles. So we didn't want a gap.
So other than that, golf course equipment, how old is that, that we're already having to replace it? It seems like you just stood up the golf course, and, I mean, these are some heavy numbers, so for equipment.
So the golf course equipment, I believe, is, we purchased that at the start of, when we set up the Golf Course Enterprise Fund? I think we're in, I think we already paid for that. So I think we're in year six or seven? Maybe seven years?
Seven. I just got elected seven years ago, so it can't be that. But I can, it's, it's not something I need to know right now. I can ask you tomorrow. Thank you, Ed.
Through the Chair, I just, because I had trouble hearing. What articles, Mr. Carpenter, do you want more information on?
Ed actually knew them all. I'm so scary, but... 13, 14, 15. And I do have a question on Article 5. Just, I know they're doing, trying to remediate traffic, but have they reached out to the neighbors? I'd just be interested to know what the impact to the neighbors going to be.
Thank you.
Article 5. Cecilia has joined us, so I think she can get into the...
Okay.
Your intention on Article 5?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, my apologies. I thought the Board of Selectmen meeting started at 7:00. I apologize if I'm late in coming.
No, you're...
It was at 6:00.
Your timing was perfect.
Okay. I'm happy to talk to any of the articles that you want to ask questions about. So you were looking at... I'll wait, why don't you go ahead and I'll, I'll explain whatever you need me to explain.
Just Article 5. Just, just more concerned about outreach to the neighbors and where this, these expansions are going to occur. I mean, I know it'll take it off the road, which will be great, I'm sure, for the neighbors as well, but has, depending on the outreach to them?
We have not, we have not outreach to neighbors. Basically, what this area that we're looking to make the park expansion, the area that we're using currently right now for traffic to sit and wait when students are dropped off in the morning or in the afternoon. It's the, it's a piece of land that kind of goes, is further down from Bryn Mawr School. It's after the ball field. It's that open field area, the ball field's big, and then it's on the other side, and it's used currently for parking right now during sporting events for town things. We just were looking to see about paving that area so that in the winter months, and when it became, you know, the weather was bad, that there wouldn't be issues with parents... the weather was bad, that there wouldn't be issues with parents driving in and out of the area. Um, we felt that that would alleviate some of the, um, traffic load. It seemed to help when we would have, um, parents parked there and, um, walk over and pick up their children, or have people walk up to the, to the cars. That way, it kind of alleviated some of the traffic, because the traffic has been, and I'm sure the neighbors have been aware of the traffic. So, you know, yeah, yeah. And do you have, if you'd like us to?
Closer to where Swanson Intermediate is, the, next to the ball field, you're gonna pave it and are there gonna be any lights or anything associated with that?
Um, we haven't thought about the lights. We were just thinking about pretty much, because it was during the daytime period, so it would be in the morning and in the afternoon, and those would be the cars going in and out. We're just, um, right now, there's a lot of gravel and dirt and with rain and snow, the mud, and it becomes problematic. So we felt that it would be better if it was paved, that it could be, um, plowed in the winter, that way.
So you haven't gone to plan stage yet?
No. We basically have to have the money approved to do this. Um, we did put out a, um, um, we put out like a bid, well, not a bid, but we put out a proposition for, um, someone to do engineering study for it right now. This is in the process. We are having someone look at that right now, just to see what the potential cost could be, but, um, we need to have it approved, the money's approved it in place. We did, already had 300,000 in CIP from a previous year for Bryn Mawr parking expansion, and we were hoping to add this 305,000 to that, 535,000 towards the project.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carpenter, uh, our DVW director is here. If you want to ask about Articles 13 through 15, um, I don't know if you wanted to hold off your questions until after the meeting, or if you wanted to?
I'll need to take up time. I can, I mean, I know she's here, but rather than take up time, I will. I'll just call her, or email her, or email Julie, and she can send it down.
Do board members have any other questions? Um, I do have one regarding Article 7, um, the purchase, purchase of a new deputy chief vehicle. I was just wondering what the, um, reasoning was. Was it, is it just, um, that it's, it's past its time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, much like the ambulances, I received a letter last week, um, from MHQ, the vendor who we purchased our vehicles from, and vehicles are the same way. We're about 15 to 16 months out from any new vehicle purchase. Uh, even prior to us knowing that, uh, when we received the new supervisor's vehicle, uh, this past year, it was my hope that we were gonna be able to keep the Tahoe, uh, in service for another several years as an academy vehicle, uh, but the frame was rotted on that, so I was forced to put that out of service. Typically, if you look at any vehicle in the department, it, it has a primary use, and then over the 12 or 13 years that we keep the vehicle, it usually has a couple different jobs until it's phased out. Uh, because I had to put the Tahoe out of service, I'm actually short a vehicle. So I'm looking to move the deputy chief's vehicle, which is currently slated in the five-year capital. I'm looking to move that up a couple of years for two reasons. One, the vehicle that the deputy in right now, it is undersized. Um, we put him into a smaller vehicle when we, when we purchased that, um, but we're learning that that was a mistake. It's, it's too small for the amount of equipment, uh, that he needs to carry. Uh, so we need to go to a larger vehicle for him. Uh, but also, uh, the K-9 vehicle, the engine has been blown in that, so we're gonna take the deputy's vehicle, move that into the K-9 spot, uh, and then that will free up the vehicle. Once we get an engine hopefully donated to fix that vehicle, that will become the pool car that eventually, uh, that the Tahoe was not able to serve. But, the larger concern is, even if we try to move the deputy's vehicle up and we end up getting, you know, able to place an order, we're still a year and a half out from that coming. So, to wait another two years to place the vehicle, you know, now we're three years out. So, a lot of these moves that we're making, even with the ambulance, just knowing what the timeframe is, and I'm sure you've all seen it on the news, the problem with computer chips. Ford has hundreds of thousands of vehicles sitting on lots that can't go anywhere because of the chip issue, um, from China. So, a lot of these moves that we're making, we're trying to still work within the five-year capital, but be able to place orders for vehicles early in hopes that in that 17 to 18-month period, we're able to kind of, we're able to see them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, before we move on, any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
Through the chair. Ashley, if I may, uh, the town council, uh, go back to our town planner today on a couple of the zoning issues that we just want to make you aware of. So if you don't mind, I was gonna have Adam just explain it, because I think it is a requirement that we explain to you, the law.
Sure.
Thanks.
I thank you. Good evening. Um, so as Julie said, this is a requirement of the law. This is related to the dimensional regulations. Um, I received guidance from town council this afternoon, um, regarding the changes that were done at the state last year to Chapter 48, zoning by law, um, specifically Section 19 of the Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. So the change, um, allows in certain situations only a majority vote, um, for certain zoning proposals at town meeting, uh, and in this case, the dimensional regulations is related to density. It was one of the allowed, um, to increase housing, was only allowed uses to have just a majority, uh, vote at town meeting. So, I reached out to town council to see if this fit that bill, and it, it, there's a guidance, it does. So, um, per our interpretation of the law, it'll be at town meeting, a simple majority for the dimensional regulations instead of the normal two-thirds. The other proposed zoning changes would still be the two-thirds vote for passage, so.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Alan.
That's all. Thank you.
I just, if I may, through the chair, just, uh, wanna let you know that a representative from Eastland Partners is here, in case you had any questions on Article 19. Uh, but I can just briefly tell you that that is the request and the recommendation, uh, by us to grant an easement to Eastland Partners at 190 Washington Street to hook into our sewer system. Uh, that dollar amount, Mr. Carpenter, is also blank. We have, had to go out and get an appraisal on the valuation of that easement, and I talked to the appraiser who's doing that report. He's almost done with it, and will have the number to me by the end of this week, and certainly by the time that this gets printed. Uh, it's, it is a nominal amount, but you still have to have it appraised, because you have to give an easement for market rate. So I just wanted to acknowledge that Eastland Partners is here. Uh, they made an effort to come in, just in case you had any questions, and I also can answer some of them, just not the technical on their, on their side.
Board members have questions regarding Article 19?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Um, so, I don't know if board members want to hold off on the articles that, um, have no dollar value, um, or recommend the others, but we'll take, entertain any motions. Mr. Berthin?
I mean, if, we're, we're waiting for several different numbers, um, and, um, and I think that, uh, Mr. Carpenter's asking some questions about a couple of the, uh, articles, so, uh, items. So if we're able to, uh, just maybe make a vote next, uh, meeting, I think that's probably the best, best way to go about it.
I think the only reason that, yeah, I think holding off, we'd still be able to notify them. We just wouldn't be able to even notify, uh, town meeting members in advance. All right?
Right.
Right. Yeah, the mailing wouldn't get their time, but we can certainly hold off. Um, I was planning to attend town meeting anyway and can let them know in person what the board's recommendations are. I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Through the chair, yeah, the, the chair usually gives a brief report on the position for each article, and we've also been including it, the written report, when they check in to town meeting that evening. Uh, but yes, we have to get the, I think our deadline, because of the holiday, I believe our deadline is gonna be mailing it on Friday, the 8th, uh, because Monday's a holiday. So technically, the date is Tuesday, the 12th. I don't have to go out, but we always go a couple days earlier, just in case. So we'll go out a week from Friday.
I know you do pre-meetings. Has that date been a?
Yes, that date, the pre-town meeting is, thank you, October 18th, in this room at 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
6 o'clock.
So it sounds like it's, uh, the board would want to hold off until our next meeting, in two weeks. So, with that, if there's nothing else on, um, the town meeting warrant, move back to our regular agenda. Uh, and we have Item 5B, which is a wage theft policy or bylaw, and I did see that the, um, representatives that I asked to come in are here, in case board members have any questions. So, oh, I'll give town employees a minute to clear out. Thank you all for coming.
I should have.
So, this is an issue that, uh, came to my attention after some events in town, uh, that I think board members were all made aware of by the town manager, uh, related to employees, uh, on a private contract, not receiving pay for the work that they had done. Uh, after reaching out, or to members of the carpenters' union, um, I learned that there were some bylaws that other towns had adopted to try to prevent, uh, things like this from happening in public contracts. Um, and since we may be looking at a pretty large contract, uh, with regard to the public safety complex, I thought it might be a good idea to start exploring, uh, what these bylaws could look like. Um, I did start mostly looking at Amherst, uh, because they have a pretty strong bylaw that they had just passed recently, and, um, Worcester also has an ordinance on the books. So, the goal of something like this would be to, um, have a policy in place for if, um, a subcontract that's associated with a, a public project doesn't pay their workers fairly, or, um, to prevent it from happening in the first place by not allowing public contracts to go to subcontractors that have had a history of this occurring. Um, so, if it's all right with board members, I'd like to ask, uh, members from the carpenters' union to come up and just kind of explain, uh, what happened in a neighboring community that, um, that might be justification for, for such a bylaw. Uh, can you please state your name and address, too, for the record?
Uh, Frank Gomez. Uh, good evening, everybody. So, um, this ordinance is to prevent a way staff for many projects, public projects. Um, there is a big wave of way staff throughout the entire state, and so this is to promote accountability to the contractors to do the right thing, create a level feel, and, because contractors that don't, uh, pay workers not only fairly, but don't pay workers at all, and usually they don't pay, uh, taxes, payroll taxes, and they don't pay overtime, they can undercut a regular contractor by 30%. So this is not a union or open shop issue. It's actually encouraging contractors to do the right thing. We actually, um, many towns have passed this ordinance, but I think recently, here in Auburn, it happens in the project behind the city hall. Locally, we have a developer that did the right thing, stepped in and got some of the workers paid, but, um, there was 11 workers that didn't get paid, and now we got an ongoing investigation that it's over 4,000 hours that had not been paid from this project. These usually are undocumented workers, that these contractors take advantage of them. It's usually a trickle down chain, a sub, a sub, and, you know, misclassifying workers, so they don't have to pay proper taxes. So this ordinance will help, uh, in any public project, create a level feel for all contractors and accountability for other contractors. So that's pretty much what it is. We see other in Auburn, not in Auburn, I'm sorry, in, um, Amherst, we got a case where there was $53,000 that was stolen from the workers, and again, we worked with the attorney general and, and to the, the general contractor on site to recover that money, and that was enough for the town of Amherst to adopt this ordinance. So, uh, if you guys have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer. But that's pretty much what it is.
Uh, do board members have any specific questions or comments right now? Mr. Berthin?
So, uh, so are you, um, proposing to put a policy in place?
Uh, right now, all I'm asking is to, or to get the board's temperature to see if this is something that the board wants to pursue. Uh, this is something that I think is worthy of us looking into and trying to develop a bylaw. I've started to look, that's why I mentioned that I had started to look at Amherst, um, to come up with a draft of what one might look like for Auburn. Uh, but before I brought anything before the board, I wanted to, uh, start with this initial discussion to see if board members had interest in, uh, in pursuing it and going down that road. So all I'm, I'm asking tonight is, uh, if board members think that this is something that we should look into further. Yes?
So I'll speak for myself, that, um, I think this is definitely a good start, and, um, I would, uh, like to see what, what Amherst put in place, and I'd like to take a look at that. Um, and, you know, see if, if we can, anytime, you know, you can get ahead of these things, um, I think it's, it's a good idea. Um, where, where my hesitancies are, is that I don't want to, um, you know, overstep our bounds, uh, so, but I, I think it's definitely worth looking into.
Mr. Carpenter?
Is this something that can be handled contractually, or is it something that a town or city would need to have a bylaw in place in order to exclude people or, you know, bad actors? It sounds like these individuals are. Is this something that can be handled contractually through the manager's office, or is it something that needs a bylaw to effectuate it, I guess?
My understanding is that it can be held, uh, through contracts, but that it has more, uh, enforcement by actually putting it in, uh, the form of a bylaw. But I'm also going to turn back to Frank to, uh, speak on that a little bit.
Can you repeat the question, because I can hear it?
Sure. My question is, is this something that can be handled contractually through the manager's office, or is it something that we need to have a bylaw?
Um, my understanding is that a lot of these, um, ordinance have passed, and they, they are contractually. So they, they usually like that, they have a document that presents it as competent, yes.
I would share Mr. Berthin's hesitancy, just because I don't know 30B, I don't know a lot of these things, which doesn't mean I can't learn it. I'm just, you know, certainly won't say don't continue, but I wouldn't run all the bases just yet with me. I, I would like to talk to the manager and read this packet, which I appreciate you bringing, and, uh, learn more about it.
Other questions?
Uh, no, not at this time, no.
No. Um, do town, does town administration have any questions or comments?
Um, through the chair, it's something that we can look into for you. Uh, I, I would also highly recommend, if it goes the bylaw route, that I absolutely need to have town council review, but even if it was a policy, town council needs to review, because I think, as a couple of you pointed out, we just would want to make sure that we're within, uh, the regulations of 30B and public procurement, and what limitations there may or may not exist. I have not looked at this specifically, so I don't want to give any comment on this, uh, what Amherst or Northampton did, but certainly something we can look at, if the board wants us to pursue it.
Um, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So, uh, I know that, um, a town of Sutton didn't have any bylaw in So I know that, um, the town of Sutton didn't have any bylaw in place. And they had a situation where, uh, under a public contract, some employees were not paid. I was wondering if you could speak to, uh, what happened in that case? And if they had a bylaw in place, how that might have, uh, played out differently?
Absolutely. I think Jason can take this. He was in charge of that case. Can actually speak on it.
Thank you for having us today. This is great. I appreciate it.
Uh, can you state your name and address?
My name's Jason Cubert. I'm an organizer with the carpenters union local 336. So how it relates to Sutton and how the, the wage theft ordinance takes, it will hold water here is because it's a, this was a public project. I'll give you this document. It's the AG's, their findings. And so let me pass it to you so you can read it.
Well, while Jason's passing those out, um, I, I did get a chance to talk to Jason.
Thank you.
A couple of times and through him giving me a call. And it sounds like, and the reason I'm, um, looking forward to seeing what Amherst wrote is it, it almost sounds like that, um, some of the verbiage that gets put into the contract can help to accomplish what they're looking to accomplish and, uh, curtail the, the wage theft. And so it, it might just be that, you know, we need to be more in, or, you know, not necessarily the, the board, but as a town, more informed so that when, when the contracts are written, it's something that you can look at that and see if that verbiage is there and say, um, you know, would it be a problem to put this verbiage in? Not necessarily that you're, that you're gonna stop the contract or not stop it, but, um, that, that it might be beneficial to the town that, that verbiage is in there. And I don't know exactly what that verbiage is. You might go into something like that. But it sounded to me, it sounded logical to me, um, when, when Jason was trying to explain it to me and how it would, um, help not, not, kind of the town, but more so the, the, the general contractor, uh, to hold the subcontractors accountable.
Yes, you're correct. It's, it, these ordinances are created to put preventive measures in place because these bad actors, they tend to steer clear of projects with this type of language involved because they already have a business model that represents wage theft and tax fraud. And they capitalize on that. So in the private sector, they can get away with that often because there's no oversight. With like town of Sutton, prevailing wage laws, there's certified payrolls. There's a lot of, there's a microscope over, under everything. And even with a town doing things correctly, they had an owner's project manager, a clerk of the works onsite. They did their due diligence. It's just they can only do so much. They can't, you know, they, they really can't go after the worker and say, show me your paycheck. Although that would be nice, but they can't. So typically, a lot of these things happen when they get exploited and then they come talk. And then, then everything comes out. You know what I mean? And, but again, you still have to get people that are timid to come forward even because of their, you know, immigration status. A lot of, most of the people that have wage theft happen to them are people that maybe not have the best immigration status in this country. That doesn't mean they shouldn't get paid for the work that they did. And the attorney general made it clear. They don't look for that. They just want to make sure people get their money. That one case, I had one person come to me and you can read, 23 people ended up being through three different companies after their investigation, which you can see it's a hefty, you know, fine, uh, but it doesn't deter. You know, they made so much more money on that, that it's kind of like a drop in the bucket sometimes for some of these bigger contractors. You know what I mean? So again, it's just language put into public contracts to prevent unsavory contractors from even bidding. That ultimately that. You're not gonna stop it 100%, but it's about putting things in place to help mitigate.
So, um, my understanding of what the bylaws do, um, at least in Amherst and Worcester, is keep this so that when the municipality makes a deal with a, um, general contractor, that these will, these, um, I want to say restrictions, but, uh, this is already written into the contract, that this will be written into the contract. So, um, I, I guess because what I'm hearing from the board is that there's, uh, you know, can we, do we not have to write a bylaw? Can this already be put into our contract separately? And my understanding is that this bylaw creates those restrictions automatically in our contracts. Is, is that right?
That's my understanding, yes. It, it puts it in the place so that for one, the town of Auburn has something to refer back to to say, look, this is, this is, this is the law of the land and you violated that. Most of the times, excuse me, they are connected to your, to your public project. So say the public safety complex that goes out, it'd be a bid out from the town. While from the town, that, that bylaw will be kind of connected to that, that process. It'll be connected to it. So when the people bidding the project read the bidding documents, there's gonna, they're gonna know that there's a bylaw in this town that states X, Y, Z.
So I, do any other members have questions or comments? Another one. Is there any reason to believe that putting a bylaw like this in place might deter, um, competition for, if the town was seeking the, um, general contractors? Could this deter people from bidding on town projects?
Every municipality that, that has adopted this has not seen any lack of development because of it. As you saw, you see a lot less wage theft happening in the, in the public sector.
Town administration, have any questions or comments?
I think if the, just if I would ask the board for direction on how you want us to proceed? If you want to take a vote for us to research this? Or you want to have further discussions, just to let us know what you want us to do?
How's the board feeling on, on how they want to proceed? Ms. Berthin?
I would, I would, uh, you said that you had an example of what Amherst wrote.
Right.
If maybe, uh, you could, uh, send a copy of that or have a copy sent, emailed to each of us, uh, we can take a look at that. And, um, uh, you know, then if, if it requires further, um, action from there, but I don't see that we need to take any action tonight on it.
I agree. I think we need to learn more about it as individual members before we ask staff to shift another priority to this. Not that it's not important, but it's, I think we could do a little research on our own just so that we understand the outlines. And then we can have a more constructive conversation with the manager or ask questions that town council might give us some feedback. Or maybe the AG's office can give us some free legal advice. I'm not, I'm not sure if they do that, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to, as we move along, to see if somebody from the Fair Labor Division could come out and give us some, you know, information as well. Because it sounds like they handle this all the time. So they're, they're experts, so.
And that's why I wanted us to, to start having this conversation. I wasn't originally looking for a vote tonight, uh, so, yeah, just to.
I, um, through the chair, um, well, first off, I guess I would be more in favor of sending it over to the town administration to look at, but I completely see their point. But a question for you, sir.
Yes.
With tax credits, federal, state tax credits, there's no requirements to get those tax credits for that?
Unfortunately, that is another thing that we're trying to help, we're trying to get in front of as well. We find there's a lot of, and Frank can actually speak a lot because he's been deeply involved. A lot of these, um, projects that get low income housing tax credits, historical tax credits, this type of work is hap, it's happening there as well. Um, it is, it's, it's happening there. And I don't know if you want, you want to comment on it? You, you go with that, my answer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be, all right.
Yeah.
Do board members have anything else on this? It sounds like. Uh, we want to continue the discussion. I will send over, um, the Amherst bylaw, Worcester's ordinance, and some more information out to the town manager to distribute to the, uh, other members. I did start to, uh, edit down a version that could be used for Auburn that I've already shared with town administration. And we can, we can share that one out as well. But if that's it, then, yeah. Awesome. Thank you very much for coming in, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to move up agenda items five G and five H? All right. Uh, I'm sorry, I haven't taken the vote yet. Yeah. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, five G, we have a Mass State Lottery Commission. This was on our agenda a while ago. I'll hand it over to the town manager to speak on it.
And if I can also ask our building commissioner Caleb Moody to come up. This, as you commented on, Mr. Chairman, this was an application for a keynote to go at Auburn Package Store at 196 Auburn Street. And the board's role in this is to approve of this machine going in. So as a result, we had our building commissioner take a look at it just to see if there were any code issues, if there were any issues with restricted space or movement or fire or anything like that. So I'm just gonna turn it, uh, to Mr. Moody for an update.
Thanks, Julie. Through the chair, I think, I believe the application was for a keynote monitor. I believe the establishment currently has keynote to go. And what they're looking to do is put a monitor into the store so people could watch the screen and see if their keynote numbers come up. Very small store, very tight, small parking area. I ju, I can't recommend that we put, allow them to put a monitor into a, into a package store when we have other restaurants and establishments that we make, put seating and bathrooms in for, for the same purpose. It just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
And through the chair, if I may, uh, if Mr. Moody could, we did attempt to reach out to the company and bring them into DCG to discuss this. Can you update that?
Yeah, numerous times we asked the applicant to come into DCG. We had Shannon reach out multiple times. I reached though, um, and just no response. So finally, I sent my local inspector Gary Allard down to the store to talk to them, to see what their plan was. And they, they just did not have a good plan for, it's just, it doesn't, seems like a recipe for disaster to put a screen into a package store for people to stand, stand there and watch for their numbers to come up. And it just doesn't seem like a good idea to me at all.
Board members have questions? Mr. Berthin?
Uh, just a comment. Um, I, I fully support what your observations were. I, I know the store, it's, it's in my neighborhood and, um, you know, it, it is a very small store. It's a, it's, um, you know, very few parking spaces, like Caleb said. And, um, you know, and I, I think that, um, they, they're still able to sell the tickets. They, they just can't linger there to, to watch the screen. And, and I think that, um, probably, I, I think it's a smart decision that, you know, certainly let them sell the, the tickets and, um, but get people moving. And especially in the environment that we're at where, you know, we have put restrictions on a lot of people and, and we do put restrictions on restaurants and things. So I'm just in full support of what Caleb, uh, came up with.
Other comments, questions? Um, I just have one. So, uh, the, I know you reached out to the applicant a couple of times and there was no response with DCG. And then you actually went down to the package store to talk to them in person. Did they give any reason as to why they hadn't been responding or?
No, they didn't.
All right. I actually, I am also familiar with the location and I don't think I would have minded, um, allowing this. But seeing as they failed multiple times to respond to the DCG, I don't see a reason to support it. So with that, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we send a letter to, uh, State Lottery. And basically, uh, steal what Mr. Moody wrote in the memo as our reason for not supporting the, the application.
For the monitor, yeah.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have agenda item five H that we moved up. Feedback from a letter relative to the plastic bag ban.
Through the chair, I, I'll just jump in. I think it was my understanding that Mr. Carpenter, um, had asked to provide some feedback. So Darlene Coyle is here tonight to fill in.
I just wanted feedback from what their education has had. And if, I know we have the soft opening coming Friday. Where are we with, uh, the businesses? You know, what's the state of the education campaign, I guess? Is the?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for, um, for the inquiry. So, um, believe it or not, it has gone by quickly. So since we have been talking about the implementation for the plastic bag ban, so October 1st is, um, is Friday. And that was the date that we had targeted for the, um, for compliance, um, for the businesses. As just a, a refresh, the beginning of August was the plan for sending out notification to the businesses. And we actually were able to do that. We sent out, I want to say close to about 400, um, written notifications out to businesses. So letter of introduction, um, copy of some resources for businesses, uh, for potential vendors for compliant bags and, um, direction on the, um, the actual bylaw. That did occur the beginning of August. We also had, as part of that, we wanted to, um, do some outreach with the businesses. Myself and my team attended the, um, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, um, meeting. That was, um, uh, the 25th, so, um, towards the end of August. And, um, we were actually able to have a great meeting. They, um, allowed us to, to stay a while and talk about the, uh, plastic bag ban, the reasons for it, um, how we had a delay, um, to try to accommodate for the COVID, the, the COVID concerns. And, um, so we had a, a great meeting with them. They were actually helpful in the fact that they were able to send our information also out to all their board members. So if we by chance missed any businesses, they sent them out to their chamber, um, chamber, uh, members. We additionally attended a farmer's market, um, in the same week to create, again, some education, um, awareness about the plastic bag ban. And, um, uh, we have also put together social media, um, messages that have gone out over the past, um, several weeks. You know, similar to, again, raising awareness for, um, plastic, less plastic is fantastic is one of my favorite ones. But we've had some, uh, kind of catchy, um, educational items to, to go out. Just again, to create awareness and to get it more familiar with, uh, with everybody. We do have, um, the, uh, the inspectional team will be canvassing, um, businesses this week to go in. Again, we're not in enforcement mode. It's kind of a sweet spot still to be able to go in, provide education, put, you know, face to paper and be able to speak to business owners if they have any questions and be able to, you know, have that dialogue. And we've also, as part of our food inspections, we've already done some of this work. So while we're in there doing food inspections, we're also giving information about the plastic bag ban. So, um, you know, similar to what I outlined to you, you know, a couple of months ago, we, I'm very happy with the progress of it. And, um, you know, just wanted to let you know that things are going well. We will. We will continue to do the education. And, you know, we'll, we'll have probably a better understanding once we're out there actually speaking with people. I have to tell you, even from the, the mailing, we didn't have a ton of people call to ask questions. We had a few businesses, but we didn't have, you know, what I expected the day they went out. I was prepared with the phone, you know, I thought the phone would be ringing off the hook. But we, I, I think that people are aware of it. That was the sense that I got when I went to the chamber meeting. But we are moving forward with the plan that I've outlined and I think it's going well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Two of them. I did see a notice at Park and Shop. They do have it on their door.
Yes, yay.
To, to let the public know. So I thought that was.
We're excited about that sign.
Step in the, step in the right direction. Yeah, I was just concerned in that we had a lot of restaurants that were closed for a period of time. Are they sitting on a lot of stock? Are they concerned? Are they anxious? You know, and there could be even some retail establishments that closed I'm not aware of. But, you know, I just don't want them to feel anxious about this at this time as we're still kind of migrating COVID. I mean, obviously, we have to get the bylaw enforced. But I think, you know, my concern is with everything that's been happening for the last 18 months. I mean, it's not a worry that I want to add to anybody's day that, you know, they have an extra couple of boxes of this and now they can't use it type of thing. But it sounds like you have already outlined how you're going to handle that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? No? I'll just say thank you again for all of the work that you've done on this. As you know, this is a really special project for me. So I really appreciate all your work on it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We're getting closer.
Moving on, we have gift acceptances. $1,000 to fire rescue from LeAnn Brewer. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chairman to sign.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we have a donation in the amount of $2,000 from, it's a conference table valued at $2,000 from Worcester County Memorial Park, Paxton.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Under proclamations and recognitions, we have none. Discussion and potential vote on the process for filing library board of trustees seat. We have already discussed that motion. There's nothing else. Under town manager items, there's nothing. Table items, nothing. Board of select member items, nothing. Minutes, none. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one thing, Mr. Chairman. If I could before you. With Halloween coming fast on our heels, I just wanted to ask what the state of play is for. I know we didn't have an official Halloween last year. What is the state of play at this particular moment in time?
Right now, the plans would be to allow the event to go forward. We are holding off on having the police chief make his recommendation until your next meeting, which we usually do at the end of September anyway. And as you all know, his recommendation is always on October 31st. That hasn't changed unless there's any kind of severe weather. I remember one year we had a hurricane, a tropical storm Irene, that put it off for a little bit because of the downed wires. But other than that, it's always been recommended on the 31st. But I think we can wait until the 27th just to make sure. Our numbers were trending upwards unfortunately as the rest of the state and the rest of the country for a few weeks there. I think last week, we noticed a slight decline just last week. We don't know if that's going to stay. The Board of Health does have a meeting this week. And the discussion that's on their agenda for this week, especially due to the increase in cases that we had both internally here within our employees and in the town, was to look at recommending or putting into place a mask mandate just for our municipal buildings. Not for the rest of the community, but for our municipal buildings for two reasons. We have to maintain continuity of operations. We have to make sure that our employees are healthy and they are coming in contact with a lot of people who are no longer masked. And likewise, we have to protect the citizens of the community. We've had a couple of employees that have been tested positive for COVID. And, you know, if you're not wearing a mask, there's a chance that it could be passed on to someone else. So at the moment, the police and fire departments do have a mask mandate for their employees. But we're looking to do it for all visitors to our municipal buildings only. And I know that's something that the Board of Health is discussing at their meeting this week. I don't believe they've discussed Halloween because it really, we've talked about it internally. At this point, it's an outdoor activity. I think it's, it seems like it's safe. That could change in four weeks, but right now, it looks like it would be a go.
Well, I know you had a successful trunk of treats. So I wasn't sure if you were going to go for year two, so.
Yeah, you know, we haven't heard anything yet from the, the partners that we have worked with on that. I can check with the Board of Health and see if they've heard anything because sometimes they have that anyway and we partner with them and it was great. It was a great alternative. But we haven't seen a lot of, had a lot of phone calls or demands from parents that are concerned about their children at this point. But things, as we all know, COVID changes rapidly. Things change so rapidly. We're watching the CDC where we monitor it daily to see what their recommendations are. Of course, we're trying to watch the state and what they may issue. So knowing that it's still six weeks away, you know, fingers crossed, it looks like we can move forward. We're planning also all of our other fall events right now and holiday events. We're planning them with the understanding that, you know, we've all learned something can change and shift the dynamics at the last minute. But right now, we are planning all the different fall events and winter events that we usually hold.
We'll say trunk or treats was a fun thing to do. If, if our slide had worked, it would have been a lot better. Town manager couldn't, I tried to build a DCG slide that we could stand up and just shoot candy at kids, but it broke apart and then we couldn't get it to stay. So of course, we were just walking around with it.
We didn't hit any children with it.
So we were just walking around with this pole shooting, yeah. But it was, it was, that made it better.
It was a great event. It could have been a little warmer.
Yeah, true. But yeah, anything else from other members? Sina?
Good journey.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Spirit.